Good evening. It is Tuesday, October 13th at 6:30. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or called executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. We have a very full dais this evening. Our city manager has joined us, and we have one council member that is virtual. It is 6:30, and we are called to order. If you are in the audience, if you would please stand, we will be saying the pledges to both flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its standing, to our nation, to God, and to visible, deliberate, just as well. In the honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas honesty, to God, to all.
If you would please remain standing. Our chaplain, Dale Burke, is with us this evening, and he'll be giving us our invocation. Chaplain Burke?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, what an honor it is to come here and pray over the council tonight, the city council. And Lord, your word says how good and pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. And I thank you, Lord, for the council, the city council here, Mayor Schrader, our new city manager, Mr. Hoffman, Lord, and every council member here who's dedicating their time. And Lord, I thank you for their godly leadership that they have. And Lord, I thank you that in a time when there's turmoil throughout the country, that you have protected Bastrop. And Lord, I thank you that there's a covering over here, that we can noticeably see it, Lord, that there's more peace and unity here. There are things to be discussed, but Lord, I thank you, there's civil conversations between different people of different identity and different thoughts. But Lord, I thank you that we can have that peace tonight, as each council member, as they are presented with different things. Holy Spirit, lead them, guide them, give them wisdom in all the decisions that they make. We thank you, Lord, for all that they do in this city, Lord, to make this a safe city, a prosperous city. And Lord, I thank you for your blessings upon it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much, Chaplain Burke. We'll be moving on to the next item, which is the mayor's report. And Dale, before you leave, one of the things I wanted to do was thank you so much for participating in National Night Out and for offering the invocation for us last week. I really appreciate you and all the chaplains. So thank you so much for then and for now. So council, we're on item 4A, mayor's report. I've got just a few things for you. There's not any slides, but I'll go over a couple of quick things. I went to the library board meeting last Monday, October 5th. That was the first day of our Phase 3 opening. They had 50 people in the library in the first two hours. So people were really glad that the library was open, and they told me it was steady. It never was really crowded. It was a very controllable, very, very happy crowd to be in the library. So thanks to the library board and to our librarian, Becca Sexton, and her staff. Most of us participated. Councilmember Peterson, I think you had a very, the cool ride with your convertible. It was a great evening to be out in the convertible. For some reasons that council's still discussing with the city manager, we were not allowed to ride in the brand-new fire trucks, although I think councilmember Rogers, myself, and Mayor Pro Tim Nelson had fire truck envy and really wanted to be in the fire truck, but safety won out, and we did not climb up in the trucks, but really had a great evening. And I rode with Chief Nagy, and we had one of our new officers with us, and his name is Officer Aileen, and he married his fiancee, now wife, Ashley, and they got married on October 10th. So I just wanted to give them a shout-out of congratulations. They're both police officers, and they're going to be starting their married life, looking for houses when we talked last. Then on Wednesday, I participated in the chamber luncheon, and Chairman Syria was the guest speaker. And last week, the Texas Economic Development Corporation, the statewide EDC conference took place last week, and there were some really great sessions, took a whole bunch of notes, and a shout-out to Cameron Cox, who was one of the panelists in one of the sessions. Y'all, we are a town that doesn't even have, according to any of the censuses yet, we are less than 10,000 people. There were towns with like 100,000 people that were bragging that they had given grants to maybe eight to 10 businesses. And we had given out $500,000 to 126 businesses. So I was just, I was really proud of Bastrop. I voted today. Today is the first day of early voting. I want to encourage everyone to vote. You guys have heard me say before, if you don't vote, don't gripe, like you are losing your chance to complain if you don't participate in the process. Shout-out to Kristin and her team and the volunteers. I stood in a few lines, but it really reminded me of being at a well-run amusement park. You were, those lines were moving all the time, and even though the line was almost to the door of the courthouse, it was 15 minutes from beginning to end. So don't let a long line keep you from voting. And just reminding everyone that their hours are 8 to 5, and they are open on Saturday, 8 to 5. Sunday is 1 to 5. Then all of next week is 8 to 5, 1 to 5 the following Sunday, and then the 26th through the 30th, it is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So please, please, do your civic duty and get out and vote. You guys know, one of my favorite things to do, and I'm going to go back on National Night Out, we left the convention center parking lot at 6:30, and we didn't get back till 8:30. And I was just, I want to, hats off to city manager and staff. I brought a copy of their map. We went through Riverside Grove and Hunter's Crossing and Pecan Park and Tahitian Village and went all through downtown. And I have to say, and I don't know her name, but we were in Riverside Grove, and there was a young lady that I'm going to guess was about seven years old. She was so excited, she was jumping up and down, and it just made me remember the days when you could be so excited, you were jumping up and down. I'm so glad that that went so well. You guys know I love to brag about staff, and I received just a wonderful, wonderful letter from John and Marilyn Sullivan, and they could not say enough sweet things about Mary Tipton. And he started with, "My wife and I have been pre-planning our funeral arrangements, which is a difficult process, to say the least. Our final concern was to find a burial plot. I called the City of Bastrop office and had the good fortune to be connected to Mary." And he goes on to say that she made suggestions to make it easier, and that Mary is a real asset to the City of Bastrop, and her services to the Sullivan family are very much appreciated. So let's have a round of applause for Mary. Love it when our staff gets recognized for all the great work that they do. Flu shots, go get one. I have, I voted today instead of getting a flu shot. I'm promising to get a flu shot tomorrow, but please, please. We had a conversation, and I'll talk about, I'll talk about this a little bit when we have our COVID update later in the agenda, but do not hold off for the vaccine. It's really important that you get, it's flu season, you need to get your flu shot. Please get your flu shot. Looking ahead, councilmember Jackson and I are both on the TML board, and they had a virtual happy hour, which that is something that really, you can't, that's not like a happy hour when it's virtual, but we did have a good time and got to catch up with some folks. So the TML conference starts tomorrow, and for the, some of you already know, we were already talking about, most of the sessions are pre-recorded, and so you have several months to check them out. So, which I think is really cool, because often when we're at the conference, we have to choose between sessions, and now you'll have an opportunity to see all of them, and there's some really good starts. There is a BDC board meeting on Monday that I'll be attending. Looking ahead to Halloween, yes, there is still going to be Halloween. I've gotten a couple of calls about Pecan Street. Yes, Pecan Street will be closed, just like it was last year. So those of you that live in the area are aware of that, and you know what's involved in that. And if you're new to the area or not, or just don't remember exactly what happened last year, Chief and his team and staff will be handing out notices and taking care of things to remind everybody how that's going to work. And the YMCA is hosting a drive-through Halloween at Mayfest Park from 5 to 7:00. So trying to, even with COVID, make sure that we still get to let the kids enjoy Halloween. So that'll be going on out at Mayfest Park. Council, I know you've received an email, but want to remind you that the annual boards and commission appreciation dinner is November 12th. That's the Thursday after our next council meeting. And something that I think is really fun, that various people may or may not agree, but NASCAR is coming to Cota next year. And so they'll be at Circuit of the Americas, May 21st through the 23rd of next year. And I had a conversation with Susan Smith, and we talked about, it's a really great time for folks to know that you can get to downtown Bastrop faster than you can get to downtown Austin from the airport. And if you're driving in, and you're going to be driving to the Cota side, it's a whole lot easier to get there from this side. And that could just really be an economic boost for our retailers and our businesses. So I want to talk about that. And we have a staff member named Christina Davis, and she promised she was going to come to council tonight, because she really, really wanted me to publicly wish her a happy birthday on Friday. But since she's not here, I'm not going to do that. But we're going to move on to council member reports. I'll have to wish her that in person on Friday. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, do you have anything for us this evening?
Just a couple of quick things. Tag on to your comments about National Night Out. It's such a pleasure to work with two chiefs, our police chief and our fire chief, who believe in public service, but more importantly, in community service. So thank you. The other thing is that this first day of early voting in the state of Texas, 175 years ago today, the state of Texas passed an ordinance to be annexed by the United States. I just thought that was pretty significant on this first day of voting in the state of Texas. So that's it.
I'm not going to say anything smart aleck about. I thought you were going to say, 175 years ago, I voted the first time, because that would be tacky. So I'll just move on to councilmember Rogers.
Did I say that was the end of my?
Counselmember Rogers?
I don't really have too much to follow that. On the National Night Out, that was a lot of fun, but I did miss going around and actually seeing people. And after about 8:30, I was missing those hot dogs. I was hungry. But it was a great event, so tickled the city was able to work out something to make it happen. And I'm very disappointed about not riding in the fire truck, just so the city manager knows. I'm very, see my sad face?
She is showing her sad face.
You have a Main Street meeting tomorrow, and that's it.
Great. Main Street tomorrow. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. First of all, I just want to say that I voted by mail this morning. I drove by the courthouse, burst in line, in and out. And I drove around the corner, and there was a line all the way down the block. So I got in there and got out, but it's done. Second of all, I got to comment on National Night Out. I think my great nieces had more fun than I did. Matter of fact, I can still hear the baby's voice in my ear. She's mocking the fire trucks. I mean, loud, too. I can still hear it. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
We're so glad. It was fun to have them with us, and it was really nice. I know, Chief Nagy, it was really sweet to have so many people thanking both our police and our fire for their service. It was just, I just love our town. Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last meeting, I've chaired the comprehensive...
The Cultural Arts.
I can't think. The Camp Ad Hoc Working Group, the Cultural Arts Master Plan Working Group. We had a great meeting. We have another meeting on Friday, where we will be taking the, rolling up our sleeves and taking our gloves off, so to speak, to really come up with some, some good guidelines for council. That's all I have.
All right. Great. Councilmember Jackson?
Well, I just wanted to say that since we last met, we had a parks board meeting, and we had some very interesting discussions, and there's some things that are on the agenda tonight, which I'll talk about later on. There's a couple of issues that we had that I would like to definitely support when we get to that point. And as the mayor mentioned, we had a happy hour with our Texas Municipal League this evening, and that was fun. It was a very sobering happy hour, but it was very nice to get a chance to see some of the people that are with the board and to talk with them. Earlier this morning, I had a TML meeting, and we have chosen the TML president-elect for next year, and that will be announced on Thursday. So I'm excited about that. We have new leadership coming in, and it's going to be very exciting, I think, with the person that we've chosen for that, if the board approves the nomination. But it was a good meeting, and I look forward to all of the different sessions at TML, all the different things that are coming up. There's just a lot of learning sessions and training sessions that I'm very excited about, and I look forward to talking with them and sharing that information and implementing some of it here in Bastrop. But as I said, I'll have more speak about the parks board situations in a few minutes when we get to those items on the agenda.
Thank you. City manager's report. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. And before I get into the few slides I have, I'd like to make a couple of acknowledgements of staff work in addition to what council members have already made mention of. The Plexiglas shields were quite the group effort. Paul Gonzalez and Kevin Hoppa from the Public Works Department were primarily responsible for the construction of them. Several people were involved in the design, including Trey Jobe and Colin Guerra. And thank you, council. I think it's a really good product as a result of all of that. And you'll also notice, council, that this evening at your seats is a brand spanking new copy of the fiscal year 2021 budget that you voted on in September. So thank you, Tracy Waldron and her team, Mary and Trina, for putting all that together. So I will make mention of a few things. Last week, Trey Jobe once again proved that he is a great public advocate and explainer of the B-3 codes to people who need to understand those codes. And last week, he presented virtually to about 45 traffic engineers about the B-3 codes and how that we don't require TIA's first rattle out of the box anymore, but we do require compliance with the master transportation plan. Mr. Jobe continues to do a good job with explaining how the B-3 codes work. Shout-out to Chief Nagy and Assistant Chief Stefanik. At their initiative, they and other county officials received a briefing from Ms. Miles, whom Mayor Schrader mentioned earlier, on electioneering law, both penal code references and election code references, so that we can help make sure that what happens at our polling places over the next few weeks is safe and secure and not disrupted. And thank you, Chief Nagy, for taking that initiative. I'll give a brief MyGov update. It is going well. There is still quite a bit of work to do. I can announce that the primary modules are all live. That doesn't mean they're all working as seamlessly as they can be, but Jennifer and Vivy from the planning department are spending quite a bit of time trying to work out the kinks and make sure this all works. On the, on the slide in front of you is a list of what those primary modules are. I'll call your attention specifically to the last bullet point, the request manager. The request manager may be the module that has the broadest interest to our, to our citizens. And so this slide generally describes what folks can do through the request manager. And I'll tell you, in my office, when we receive complaints or concerns or questions from citizens, either forwarded by one of you guys or that come directly to us, we, we do take the time to make sure those, those issues get created as a record in the MyGov system, because how we report will be significantly enhanced once we get this underway. And these next bullet points speak to the work that is ongoing. We are working our way, both internally and externally, to make sure these modules are working to their fullest capacity. And that second bullet point is about the reports and the reporting function that we're still working through and will get better at. But as an example, we can produce some metrics, and again, this is an example of the kind of information that we can now easily get from our system. So, so far, we have 250 customer service requests that are input into the system, and in terms of development cases, we input 261 since the inception of that module, with 207 currently active. And so we'll have more discussion, council, as we move on about, about reports we provide you guys on a monthly and a quarterly basis, and what we're able to pull from MyGov will be a big, important part of that. I'll take a moment to talk about the more significant items that we've got scheduled for your next couple of council meetings. So your next meeting is in two weeks, October 27th. And you heard about our limited tax note issuance as part of the budget. Our financial advisor will be here in the room and, and will present what that is all looking like on October 27th. I mentioned to council before, and council has expressed interest before, I think it was at an August meeting, in pursuing a speed hump policy. Curtis Hancock and Trey Jobe and I, and this, the work we've done so far has also included our police chiefs, Chief Nagy and Chief Rosales, will outline and overview for you a proposed speed hump policy on the 27th. We won't ask you to vote on the 27th, but we'll get your feedback and direction and take it from there. And we'll continue to keep the folks, particularly on Wilson Street, informed of that progress. And, and this has a Wilson Street tie as well, we'll also provide an update on where we are on sidewalk implementation. Assistant City Manager Jobe's been creating that sidewalk plan for a while. We certainly can add Wilson Street to that mix, and council will see some detail on the plan and cost estimates at your next meeting. Also, on the 27th, you'll hear a whole bunch of reports from various groups. Those are the normal quarterly reports. We will also have before council, and this will be on your agenda for consideration, a golf cart ordinance. Council members, I know you have, and I know the police department has received quite a few inquiries about making golf carts on Bastrop streets legal, because it really isn't so legal today, even though we, we do see a lot of that activity. So Chief Nagy has done the research into some other ordinances that we can steal from, especially the City of Smithville, that has been doing this for a while and has a, has a good approach. Assistant, I'm sorry, City Attorney Borquez has looked at that as well, is creating for us a draft for you guys to consider that essentially involves a fairly simple and straightforward inspection and registration process that the police department would take on. And we will also receive a presentation at the next meeting from our local COG to celebrate their 50th anniversary. And then for November 10th, two meetings from now, we will, we will bring for, before you for your consideration, a legislative program resolution. Those of you who sat in on the training we received from Allen and members of his team a few weeks ago will understand the importance of the local jurisdiction passing that kind of resolution. Right now, we, we know that we will put emphasis on receiving funding for the Old Iron Bridge on that resolution, but council members, if there are other areas and topics of particular interest that you would like to see included in that resolution, give me a shout over the next couple of weeks, and we'll make sure we include that in the draft as we, as we prepare it for the full council to, to consider. The executive director of the, of carts will be presenting a micro transit pilot program on our next meeting, and that's some pretty exciting stuff that I think council will be pleased to, to hear about. And also on November 10th, council, I plan to bring to you a plan for amending the city's org chart and respond to some of the suggestions and concerns council made to me when I was still a candidate for this job. I think we're putting together a very responsive and effective plan, and I look forward to presenting that to you. And finally, on November 10th, we'll also give you a look at our budget planning, strategic planning calendar for the next several months, leading to the adoption of a fiscal '22 budget. And that presentation will include a proposed date next spring to have a pre-budget planning retreat with me and you, and we look forward to that as well. A couple of photographs that I think are cool and interesting to close out my city manager report. This is the Bastrop Convention Center in almost, in under current conditions, full capacity. That was an exciting thing for Kathy and for the rest of us who are very anxious to get the convention center back to normal, again, for just a whole bunch of reasons. These are Bastrop Independent School District teachers going through a training session earlier this week. And thank you, Kathy, and to the staff for making all that work smoothly. Got a lot of positive feedback. And not to overdo all the positive comments about National Night Out, but here's a, here's a collage of some photographs that were taken. Got tons of positive feedback from the community on it. And if you'll note, about mid of, mid picture there is perhaps proof of why perhaps we can't trust you guys on the equipment. We can trust you as long as there's a cop or a firefighter nearby to make sure you don't do something weird. So thank you for all of that.
Okay, I was not doing anything weird.
No, ma'am, not at all. But it's helpful that somebody is right there.
Yes, 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 yes. I was asking how, for me, the normal question was, how much weight can you put in the basket? And I know it depends on how far out it's telescoped, what angle it's at. And so he was showing me that all those calculations are done on a screen, and you had to climb up in there to be able to see the screen. So I had permission from the chief to be standing in the doorway, but that was as close as I got, I think. Thank you very much, city manager. Was that it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, our next item on the agenda, we're at the bottom of page one, it's item 4D, a proclamation on the city, of the city council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I think it's really important that this was submitted by Chief Nagy. I think it's fantastic that our city staff had our purple lights on City Hall, starting on October 1st. This is as close to purple as I have in my closet. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson was pointing out he had on his purple shirt and his purple tie. It is, I don't know if there's anything worse than being a victim of domestic violence or living in a house where there's domestic violence going on. And as we've talked about, and we've all made adjustments during COVID, you can, can you only imagine if there's no way to get out and nobody that's coming looking for you? So I have the standard proclamation, but rather than read the proclamation, I would like to turn things over to Pastor Jackson and council, and she's going to talk about two things that she's passed out for us. Pastor Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor, council. You pretty much took it away from me with what we're going to be discussing, because what we're focusing on this year is unmask the violence. I've already given you guys the mask, but when COVID-19 became the emergency that it did and was declared an emergency health issue, domestic violence increased across the country. And it's basically because the victims had nowhere else to go, nowhere else to turn. And they were in the houses with the perpetrators who felt very at ease, because they were in their own homes, doing the violence. A lot of people were affected by that, and most of all, the victims and the children that were in those homes. The entire situation that has happened to this country with regard to the pandemic and unemployment, all of these things have contributed to the violence that's going on in the home. And so we're focusing this year on trying to make sure through this pandemic that our victims of domestic violence can get to us. We have done a lot of revamping of our services. We have done a lot of revamping of our services and how they can receive services from us. We thank you all for continuing to be a great partner. Whenever we call the city, someone is answering and willing to help and go that mile with us. We have been very accustomed to working very well with the Bastrop Police Department in the cases of domestic and sexual assault. But tonight, I wanted to add to that. I want to personally thank Chief Nagy for the assistance that he has been giving us at our thrift store. The thrift store raises money not only for revenue, but we raise money for our programs. And that came under my umbrella about three years ago. And within the last seven weeks, we've had five thefts at our store. And it's not inside the store, it's back in the dock where donations are stored. And Chief Nagy, a couple of months ago, made the mistake of giving me his personal phone number. And I've used that number, and every time I've called it or texted, he's responded. To the point where I got last weekend, I said, you want to assign me to somebody else? And I know that you have other things to do, but he stayed in it. And he has been helping us to try to identify who these perpetrators are. So I wanted to go on record tonight with you guys to tell you that the agency is very happy with the promotion of Chief Nagy because we've worked with him for years, and he's been very responsive. And in this situation, we're especially thankful for his work and the office's work. I have a great grandson who all he can say now is how wonderful those fire trucks were last week than when they passed by the house. So as I as I wrap this up, we recognize the month of October as Domestic Awareness Month because we want to mourn with those families that have lost people in death to domestic violence. We celebrate those who are surviving, and we continue to try to connect with our partners so that we can continue to put the word out there. The partnership that we have with you all and with other agencies, with other governmental agencies, help us to put a word where clients are not afraid to come and seek help. And that's the major part of this. We need to have a door open where people will know that they will be listened to, they will be believed. We will not try to tell them to leave or what to do. We will listen to them and help them make a safety plan. The partnership that we have with you all helps us to do that. So tonight, I thank you once again for helping us with the one in three and the one in four men and women who are affected by intimate partner violence. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Jackson. Here's the, we'll do the social distance passover of the proclamation. Thank you so much, you and your staff. It it takes a special person to deal with those situations and be the the listening ear and help folks through the situation. And just am personally very, very thankful for your organization existing and all the great work that you do in Bastrop County. Thank you.
I would really appreciate if Colin would get a picture of you guys and just send it to me so that we can put it out on our Facebook page at some point tonight, if he has time. I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. We'll we'll all put on our our domestic violence mask and get a picture to you.
Send it to me. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Do we want to take a quick moment and do that now with Pastor Jackson with us?
I pretty much prefer not to have any more pictures taken today.
I totally misunderstood. We will get that picture to you, Pastor Jackson. Have a great evening. Thank you so much. All right, council, we're moving on to the second page. We're at the top of the second page, item 5A, discussion regarding new information impacting the cost of Phase One of the proposed skate park to be located at Fisherman's Park. Mr. Hancock?
You with this?
Madam Mayor, is this our new Director of Public Works?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Wait, before you get started, council member, we want to give you a round of applause. Yay, Mr. Hancock.
Well, before we do get started, on the staff report, there was a mistake on it, and it was mine, where it says the board voted to ask the city council for a change order. It cannot be a change order because it's more than the 25% that y'all have already approved. But that's not why we're here tonight, anyway. We're just here to ask for your guidance and letting us know how you want us to move forward.
Kirsten with this?
As you know, we started out by picking a location in Fisherman's Park because of the natural flow of it. Staff and our consultant handled quite a few different conversations with a lot of different people, going all the way back to '18. I know y'all should know about that. We held two public meetings, had 200 people respond to online surveys, had multiple options. And this is the design that came up that y'all approved back in, I guess that was February of '20 this year. This is a company that was picked. You can see the gray area is the base bid, and that's what they bid for, $246,000. They come up with two alternate bids because we knew we had more money at the time, which is the blue and the red, which add up to $1,000 less than what we had, which is great. But then, as we get started, we did the geotech. As they're doing the design, geotech come back bad. Basically, we need to remove five foot of material and bring in five foot of select material. So as you can see, just on the base bid, it went from $246 and an additional $91,000 for the change in that, which is quite a bit. I mean, as we had budgeted, not budgeted, not approved, but we had budgeted $290,000, so which leaves us $44,000. You take the $44,000 off of the $337,086.85, it leaves you with a needing $47,086.85, which talking with Tracy, she thinks we'll probably have it in the innovation fund, but she will not know it until after she closes out this fiscal year. I mean, there's a lot of options. You could tell us you wanted, what you want us to bring back, suggestions.
So you guys are looking for some money, is the bottom line. And so you're wanting to have a discussion. So I guess, council, one of the first things to discuss, because if we're trying to trim costs, we can take out the red and blue that's shown on page 15 of the packet.
Yes, that would be going back to the base bid of $246,000.
Which, for a person who doesn't skateboard, which is myself, looks pretty boring. You might want to go back to that picture, so we're all kind of looking at the same thing. So council, what's your pleasure? It sounds like we won't be voting on anything tonight, but it's, city manager, if I understand correctly, it's really a discussion more of, does council want you to start trying to locate some money? And how much money do we want you to be looking for? Is that a correct way to put it?
Yes. And fundamentally, are we pursuing the project? And it it sounds like the answer to that question is yes, and we don't need to spend time on that if that's clearly yes. But if that answer is yes, then we need we need council concurrence to go off and figure out how to get this done just from a, not just from a funding standpoint, but also from a how to manage the contract standpoint. Because again, we can't just do a change order here. So we'll have to think through what our options are there. There are a couple of options there. So yes, if 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 we're pursuing the project and if we're pursuing the project at that location, then we've got a pretty significant funding shortfall. And Mayor, you bring up the point about the add alternates, that adding the add alternates increases the amount of the shortfall that Mr. Hancock just described, just to make sure we're we're clear on that. And if you would like for us to do all that, then we'll go put all that together. And at a upcoming council meeting, we'll we'll ask you to consider everything you need to consider, which would include a budget amendment and the appropriate contracts.
But you, thank you, city manager. You bring up a really great point, and that is, if we knew then what we know now, the very first question to ask, even, we're not voting, but we've got to get a general, are we still interested in doing a skate park, to your point, at Fisherman's? My understanding is when it was discussed at the Parks Board, it was a unanimous yes from the Parks Board. So the Parks Board is saying, we got a lot of input, and we don't want to go through trying to find another park that we can get the neighborhood to agree to. So they weren't really interested in pursuing a different location. But the Parks Board also realizes that they don't have the money to make up the difference. So council member Ennis, I can I can start down. Let's fundamentally, like, do we even, do we want to cancel the project? Or do we want to talk about the project? And if we want to talk about it, then there's there's lots of variations we can go through. Council member Ennis?
So the bottom line that we're down is 40-something thousand?
That's only if we go with just the base bid and use the money that we have out of the, we had $290 budgeted, but the bids came in at $246, so that left $44,000. So that way, by just going to base, that's just the gray, that would leave us at $47,000 shortfall. But if you go with the add alternates and with all of this, now you're looking at a total of $106,000 you're short.
I see. Okay, okay. Well, my feeling is, when I ran for office four years ago, one of the prevailing items of feedback that I got was that we didn't have enough for our young people to do in town. And to me, that's a priority. So anything we can do to improve that situation, I'm I'm game for. Now, where we get $106,000, it's another story.
But you're not interested in canceling it based on the bid results?
Right.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, do you want to have the conversation or not have?
Yes, absolutely. We have the conversation. When I when I was the Parks Liaison in '17 and '18, I was I was shocked at the amount of interest in this and the fact that the Parks Board really wanted this project to move forward. And the the interest from the community at the two public hearings was just outstanding. More 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 feedback from the community then for any other project other than than the B-3 code.
So that's a yes.
Continue.
Council member Rogers, you want to have, continue or cancel?
I'll answer your question first, then I have a question.
Sure.
So yes, I would like to continue.
Okay.
There answers your question. So I understand that you have two different prices, whether you go with the red and blue or all gray or whatever. But looking at it, it would, if we just went with all the gray area, not the two alternates, but for us to come back, it's already known to be, it's going to be a very popular thing. So I would think it would cost the city more two years from now or two years after completion to come back and add a few features to make it more popular than it already is. So wouldn't it cost us more to add it? You know, to pay a crew to come back and add you a room when you don't have one?
Sure, it would be. It would cost you more because they're already on site.
Right. That's what I was thinking. So maybe it might be better to see if we can come up with the money to do the whole thing now because it'll cost us more to try to do it later.
That's a really good point. Council member Peterson, you okay with pursuing the project?
Yes, I am.
Council, council member Jackson, are you okay with pursuing the project?
Definitely so. After, you know, I'm the Parks Board Liaison. I was listening to the Parks Board, and they're very adamant about it because of the great interest in the community. This is a project that the city has been working on for several years. In fact, some of the kids that initially talked about the skate park are now, they have their own kids. So it's something that's really important, I think, and I'm definitely in favor of moving forward. We just have to work out a way of getting the extra funding because I think we need to go ahead and and add that to our list of accomplishments for the city, especially for our youth.
Okay, thank you, council member Jackson. So city manager, we're definitely, we want to try to find some funds. Council member Rogers, I think you make an excellent point of if we're going to do it, it's never going to be any cheaper to go back and and do those things. Is anyone opposed to that? Council member Ennis, your light's on. You have the floor.
I want to add something to councilman member Rogers' statement is not only would it be more expensive probably, but you'd have to take it out of service while you're building those features, which, you know, we have an existing skate park, and then we go back and add these things, and it takes it out of service for a while.
Excellent point. And in, we do live in Texas, and the truth of the matter is, you ought to be able to skateboard probably about 365 days a year. You know, it's not like there's a season that you can't do it, that you could be working on it. So that's an excellent point. Is, so what I'm hearing from council is we would appreciate everyone at home shopping and getting our sales tax allocation up and let our chief financial officer dig through any interest on any bonds and all of the other places, and this is something that council's interested in funding. Is that, we're all on the same page? All right. City manager, is that what you needed tonight?
Yes, thank you very much.
Great job, Mr. Hancock. Thank you. All right, council, but that's a work session, so there's nothing to vote on tonight. So we'll be moving on to item 5B, discussion on Bastrop Building Block, B-3 Code, related to subdivision authority within the city limits and extraterritorial jurisdiction. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So what I'm here tonight to talk about is our plating and ETJ standards. Within the Texas Local Government Code, we're given, cities are given two main tools to regulate development and to guide growth, one zoning, which is only applicable within the city limits. But we also have subdivision authority, which extends into the ETJ, which in our case is a large area. So during the building Bastrop process, we took our codes and we created what's commonly referred to as a Unified Development Code. So the standards in those codes are are very intertwined, and we had a very clear vision of how we wanted the city limits properties to develop, but they're tied back to the zoning and the place types. So what we're here to talk about tonight is the extraterritorial jurisdiction and maybe that we need to adopt a few more standards to adequately provide for the development patterns we see in those areas that are leading into Bastrop and those areas that also contribute to our watershed. So just kind of taking a step back, plating is the legal creation of multiple parcels of land. This is something that's been going on in different fashions for over 100 years. In 1920 was the city hired Georgia Eradel to proactively go out and draw the map of the town. And that's what established all of our existing ride-a-ways that we have downtown that measure 55.55 feet wide or 20 veras, as we've all learned during the code rewrite. So you can see that the original town tract was laid out in a series of larger farm lots and smaller building blocks, which is what we base the code on that applies to everything within the city limits. Just some plating basics, the Texas Local Government Code through Chapter 212 gives the city the authority to regulate subdivision. With that, we're able to adopt codes by way, in this case, the B-3 Code, that further defines what standards we're going to require when someone comes into subdivide. That's when we're able to look at making sure we have street connectivity, making sure there's adequate civic space, parkland, making sure that the utilities are where they need to go to create a desirable development pattern. Within the city limits, when someone comes in, they'll follow our, there's two different processes to follow within our subdivision section. First is our standard plating section. This generally applies to larger projects, four or more lots. They're going to have to extend utilities. It's a series of application that establishes utilities, drainage, the actual lots and blocks themselves. For smaller projects that don't require public improvements, are for four or fewer lots, or sometimes they're just changing the boundaries of an existing subdivision, those can be done administratively. So we had a very clear vision with the B-3 Code. And so much so, we have this flow chart that's adopted in the code that starts with what is your character district and place type? And these are both categories that are within the city limits. So we start there and go through the flow chart, and that's what determines how you're going to lay out your streets, how you're going to lay out your blocks. And as you drill down further through the code, through the place types, then we define building types that you're going to build within those blocks that further define what size lots people are going to put in. We also adopted a proactive grid system that this is based off of our 720 by 720 farm lot grids. So the white lines and blue lines map out that 720 pattern. The blue lines are multimodal streets. The white lines are, can be one of several different street cross-sections that we adopted in the code. You'll see kind of it's got an irregular shape because that extends out through our statutory one-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. But we didn't take it any further than that. And as a lot of people know, we have a much larger voluntary ETJ. So what we're talking about tonight is why, why is staff coming to you talking about plating again when we talked about it for a whole year already? As we've worked through the B-3 Codes implementing them, we're looking at the ETJ. We all know that we're getting a lot of development pressure from Austin. That area between Austin and Bastrop has become very popular lately, and we're getting a lot more development. a lot more developers coming and seeing what they can do out there. So, this is, to refresh your memory, on our ETJ, we have three different areas of regulation that are all under the city of Bastrop authority. Different entities have different regulatory authorities. So, the dark green area is our statutory ETJ. So, the state recognizes that cities need a planning area, and based on our size, we get a one-mile area to look at. In the eighties, due to development pressures from Austin, even then, people proactively requested to be in the city of Bastrop's ETJ, because they'd rather be part of the city and the county than be in part of Austin. So, the lighter, middle green area is what we refer to as Area A, and the lighter green area is Area B. They're both part of the voluntary ETJ, and those two areas are defined in our fourteen-forty-five interlocal agreement, which, that's actually a different site. But you can see those, all those areas kind of are in our, what we consider our gateways to the city, seventy-one, ninety-six, they're along the Colorado River, which is our, nine-six-nine, sorry. Different roads. But it's also along the Colorado River, which is our watershed, so we get downstream drainage, and it's our drinking water source. So, why is this important to us? Why are we circling back around? It is potential future city limits, either through development agreements, through future annexation. Annexation laws have kind of turned against the city lately, but they may go back. There's always, the Texas Legislature could change the rules as time goes on. We also have, these are our gateways. People coming from Austin, from Cota, coming to town, this is what they're going to drive into see Bastrop. Also, we're concerned with our watershed. That was one of the main points of the building Bastrop review, was that we needed to make sure we were protecting our drainage and river. It also helps to establish the future road network. We do have emergency service, we corespond with other entities. Road accidents are an issue. Having alternative road networks that, around the city limits, do help with traffic flows. It also, and just basic, it ensures orderly development.
Ms. Bills, what's orderly development? Is that, we can't say zoning, but that's really sort of what we mean? What do you mean by orderly development?
Orderly development, so, we want to ensure that we have one subdivision that, once they get built out, that they put their detention pond in such a way that they flood the next subdivision. That would be not orderly. Or, you have that subdivision with fifteen hundred homes with one way in and out that causes traffic jams, and you can see the next road, but you can't connect to it. Those are things that create, down the road, frustration and issues with emergency service access especially.
Thank you.
I mentioned earlier, our fourteen-forty-five interlocal agreement is what regulates our relationship with the county in that extraterritorial jurisdiction area, both the statutory and the voluntary. Once the city has, we have subdivision and stormwater regulations that can apply in those areas, but once those processes are done, they still go back to the county to get their development permits, their septic permits, floodplain permits, all those things still go through the county review. So, we want to make sure we're working with them. We have some specifically laid out ways we interact with them on review, in the statutory and Area A. Area B, the county provides all the review for those areas. So, our rules are what applies in the voluntary, that one mile, and the middle green shaded We want to work together with them, one, to kind of establish clear triggers for plating, when is a plat necessary? We also want to make sure we're linking our stormwater drainage manuals in a way that works with their development permits, because that is something they look at, especially with their flood prevention ordinance that they've adopted. We also want to look at ways that we can work with them to align our regulations with onsite sewer requirements, because that's one of the limiting factors on size when you get into the ETJ. If you don't have an organized sewer system, you have to do your own onsite, and the state has minimum sizes you have to have in order to do that. So, one of the things, and we talked about this with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and wanted to talk to you all about it tonight too, is block standards. That's where we start with our code in the city limits, is at the block level. We don't regulate down at the parcel level, because what we're looking at, what was determined during all the public processes is, the important part is the road connectivity, that interaction with the public, private realm, and, you know, having that flexibility of having different lot sizes as things develop. So, that's where we kind of start. Do we want to continue regulating block standards in the ETJ? The master transportation plan is gridded out only through the statutory ETJ, which is our, right now, our only thing we're looking at when someone comes into plat is, is that seven-twenty block required in that location? Once you get into the voluntary ETJ, we don't have any connectivity street requirements in those areas. So, one of the things staff has talked about is, instead of having, and even within the statutory ETJ, maybe relooking at that grid and coming up with, instead of the grid, coming up with basic block perimeter standards. You can't have a block bigger than a certain size, so that you create that grid and connectivity, but give people the creativity to design a subdivision that meets the terrain for those rural areas. We also want to make sure we're working with our stormwater drainage criteria manual to make sure those criteria are required in the ETJ with or without plating. That was where we started with this discussion, was on drainage. So, we want to make sure we're able to enforce the stormwater regulations that we are allowed to enforce within the ETJ. And then the other question that's always is a big one, is when is plating not required? And this is one that comes into play a lot on smaller properties, on some family deed divisions out in the county. And staff has been looking at different situations we've run into. Some things that we definitely want to work into the code is exemptions for, if the city, county, state has come in and taken right-of-way from your property, that was, your lot changed size and shape from no fault of your own, so that you, that should not trigger new plating rules for you. Emergency permits in the county, even if somehow in the last five, ten, twenty years, your house somehow got built illegally, built without being properly subdivided, and you have a septic, and it stops working, we don't want to stop you from getting your septic fixed. So, we want to make sure that those exemptions to plating are included when required. When we talked with the Planning and Zoning Commission, they agreed that they thought this was an important topic, that we should be looking at how our subdivision standards apply within the statutory and the voluntary ETJ. One of the things we talked about is how we can influence those development patterns. One is by maybe looking at some additional rural cross-sections for streets in the county that are more appropriate county development, and that work with the county road maintenance. Continue to look at those exemptions that are appropriate for the ETJ, and then just making sure we're using all the tools available to the city to regulate those development patterns that are our front door, our, you know, kind of welcome area to the city, that do affect our watershed and all those corridors. Some of those things in our tool basket, other than subdivision regulations, you have driveway spacing, you can have our stormwater regulations and sign regulations. Our sign regulations actually do apply to the entire ETJ as well. So, that's one that would help inform some of those main corridors in the town. So, this is, when we adopted the code, one of the things we committed to was coming back in a year and talking about lessons learned, what we needed to change, getting feedback from council. Staff has identified two other primary, well, three other primary areas that we're going to bring back in the next two months. One is the structure of the Development Review Committee and how the approval authorities work for different types of applications we're reviewing. With the code, we adopted a more formal Development Review Committee that has a member of each department of the city, so we're providing a comprehensive view, but we need to make sure that that's working appropriately, and that there's one person who's in charge of making the decision on how those plats, site plans, get recommended or approved. One of the things that kind of threw us for a loop while we were doing the code, we'd spent a long time talking about how we were going to draft this code, and then the state legislature passed House Bill thirty-one sixty-seven, also known as the Shot Clock Bill, that puts some strict regulations on how cities can process and the timing of looking at certain plats and site plans. So, we adopted a schedule and a strict compliance with our submittal schedule. Within that House Bill, there are some other options for creating alternative processes, and if people want to voluntarily waiver, or fill in a waiver for the timeline, that they can submit some alternative processes. So, that's one thing we'd like to look at, to enable us to streamline smaller projects that maybe don't need to go through quite as many application steps. And the last thing we'd like to have a conversation about is the sign code. We adopted a kind of one-size-fits-all sign code for the entire town, and as we've acknowledged, we've got a lot of different parts of town. We've got a lot of cities in one in Bastrop for a town our size. We've got the downtown, we've also got a major highway corridor that's in that kind of transition period, that our sign code may need some tweaking to adequately respond to as those businesses change, that we transition from our old sign code to our new sign code. So, we'd like to have that conversation to see if there's any tweaks maybe that we can make to the sign code to make things a little smoother along the highway corridors. The other thing, what staff will be bringing forward is a new task order for Simple City Design. This will enable staff to augment our resources. I will say, I've been here now three and a half years, and we're down one person from how many people we had when I started here in two thousand and seventeen, and we've probably got about triple to quadruple the workload. So, we've had four people running the Planning and Permitting Department. So, Simple City has been helpful in augmenting staff resources for review, and we'd like to have them continue that for research and helping us write the codes. So, while they're helping write some of those codes and do some research, we're able to continue moving development forward. Any questions? And if you guys have other feedback that you read through the codes, or you hear some changes that people want to bring up, if you could give that to Paul and Trey, so we can begin looking at those, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Bills. One thing I want to ask before I turn it over to council to ask you some questions, you, the summary page we got on Planning and Zonings discussion, just wanted to, want the public to know, was that a unanimous vote, or was that a split vote? How was there?
They didn't vote, that was just feedback.
It was just a conversation?
Yeah, it was just a conversation.
Did it appear to be somewhat unanimous of, in this?
Yes.
Okay. So, I just, if there was any, well, wait a minute, let's look at it like this, I wanted to make sure council was aware of that.
Yes, and we'd actually processed two plats before we had that discussion, and they'd had a lot of discussion on the, some of the technical details on the plat, so they're very involved in understanding the subdivision process.
And council, I'll share with you that I'm thinking of one case in particular, and I know Mr. Jobe will remember this, where it was someone who had a house, and they got the famous, I know we all love it, you don't have a legal lot. And they couldn't get a permit, and they were trying to add four hundred square feet on the house, and the septic was the appropriate size, and we, and it was one of those where we all wanted to say yes, but we didn't have a way to say yes. So, I personally would like you to add on there, not just if it's, obviously, if it's a septic system's gone out, we certainly, everybody wants that to be repaired, if right-of-way's been, if they've sold or been condemned to get right-of-way, or even a public easement of some sort, they shouldn't be adversely impacted by that. But we also have some folks, particularly as far out in the county as we're talking about going, that it's been in the family for a long time, it's never been platted, and if that's step one, we've, that's a problem. So, we need to make sure that, in my opinion, we got to make sure that we address that. Councilmember Rogers?
I had a question, just for my knowledge. You have these, the voluntary ETJ?
Mm-hmm.
I noticed that, you know, there's some white spots, some green spots, where I guess they, so, can they opt out of it? Let's say grandma said she wants in, can they opt out? Just curiosity.
So, there is a de-annexation process from the ETJ, and that council would have to approve that. So, if someone wanted to opt their property out, they'd have to come and request that from council.
And if somebody bought a piece of property that's in the white, they could opt in?
They could, yeah. They could request annex into the ETJ if they wanted to. Same, it would be the same process when they, the process started in the mid-eighties, but it actually continued on almost to nineteen ninety, so it was kind of, people came in gradually.
Okay, I was just curious how they got in and out.
That's a great question. So, outside of the statutory, all of Area A and all of Area B, for it to be either color green, someone who owned property has signed a contract saying they want to get in?
Yes.
Otherwise, they're, so the white are all the people who said, "Thank you, comma, no."
And how long ago did we ask them?
Nineteen eighty-five was like when this, nineteen eighty-five to about nineteen eighty-nine, I think, was, we have a whole tub in the vault store.
I'm just wondering to ask all those other people that may have changed hands and don't realize they are, they're not. Just curious.
And I will say, Austin's ETJ has, it's not on this map, but it's pushed into Bastrop County at this point, so some of those white, the properties on the very edge, are going through Austin's subdivision process now.
Well, might not be a bad idea to opt the ones that haven't opted either way, to let them know that, hey, if you don't go in, Austin could take you.
Yeah, good point. Any other questions, or Councilmember Ennis?
We will have more discussion and more information on the Task Order for Simple City Design, right?
Yes. That'll be coming back at a future meeting.
Great, thanks.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Well, on the subject, how do they augment the Planning Department?
So, through the implementation process, they've been on hand to help with code interpretations when it hasn't been clear exactly what the intent was, or how the, because we did adopt three different sections of the B-three code. The main code is the B-three, we have the Technical Manual that provides some of the process and technical details, and then we have the Pattern Book that also plays into that. So, they've helped with that, and they've also helped with staff review. So, they've been participating in some of our review of especially new projects that are trying to come to town, that are, needing some help, trying to envision how the codes could be implemented. They've participated in those meetings with potential developers to assist with that, kind of visioning and drawing out plans, giving, you know, kind of high-level sketches.
So, they participate in the DRC?
Mm-hmm.
When we have that, and only from an interpretive standpoint, not to pass process? Because, I'm not real sure, and correct me if I'm wrong, when we adopted the B-three codes, we knew this was a living document, we knew that there was going to be some tweaks that had to be made to it, we knew some adjustments were going to have to be made, we knew that lessons were to be learned, and we're starting to learn those lessons now. And I just hope that we're not so firm in our position on, or in fulfilling, fulfilling the B-three codes as written, but that we realize that we're wanting to be sitting on yes and not no. So, during the process, is there boxes that need to be checked during the process, so that we can provide the guidance to those individuals who are looking to develop within our community? Or is it a yes-no prospect when they show up at the DRC?
So, the DRC, they've actually submitted an application, and by that point, it is, they're in a process that has some specific guidelines at that point. For the visioning, like, when we're working out what direction people are going to go, that part has more flexibility on providing feedback for people. So, that's one of the features of this code, it is very flexible, but there's so many moving parts, people have to kind of pick one spot to start and make a decision. It's more of you drawing your own painting versus painting by numbers. And I will say, our older subdivision code was, you picked a lot this size, and you put ten of them down in a row, and you were done. This one is, it says, you're going to build a block, and then these are the kinds of houses you can put there. And then you can figure out kind of backwards how your lot structure fits in that. Because that's helping us inform our public realm, how the utilities are laid out, how that open space is going to relate, and that, because that's the part that the city's going to take care of for the next hundred years. So, that's, I don't know if that answered your question.
It does to some extent. I mean, I don't envy all the tasks, but we've made commitments that this is a process that we're going through to make it easier for development. I want to make sure we're not putting stumbling blocks in front of our developers or in front of our citizens as they look to develop. And we get so locked in at the process that we don't look at what the end result is supposed to be. And I'm just trying to understand what we need to do. Do we need to provide more tools or more avenues toward tools for us to meet the intent of what we wanted to do? meet the, meet the intent of what we wanted to do when we adopted the B3 codes?
I think it's still just a learning process. I, I think that's where we're, we're still at with developers is it's, it's really flipped. Instead of I'm going to build this house 25 times, it's we need you to pick a type, a street type and how that's going to interact the street and then figure out what house you're going to fit. And it, and sometimes that means just moving your, your garage over a little bit. And we've worked with several people that they're, they came in initially, that is not going to work at all. And after we talked about it and measured out some things, they're like, okay, I'll just move, I'll twist it a little bit this way and put the garage over here and it, and it works. And it created a better streetscape and a better layout for the lot. So I think we're still just kind of in that learning process. So I think as we go along, we may come back to you next year and have more of that feedback of this is specifically what we need to change, but I don't think we're there yet, so.
Well, I, Madam Mayor, I think the challenge is on, on what we're, what we're looking at and especially the, the load that is coming to our planning department and the rest of city staff. I, I'd like to suggest we, that we workshop this to, to really visit with, with staff and even invite the P and Z to provide information during that workshop.
Are you suggest, I'm just for clarity, like perhaps a, a joint council and P and Z commission where we kind of get everybody on the same page again?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, our, our P and Z is such a vibrant committee and they really come up with good ideas and the diversity of that committee hits on ideas that, that others don't think of. And I think that to help our planning department, help our city move forward, I think that would be an ideal event to help us move forward.
Council, is everybody okay with that in, in general? As the P and Z liaison, I think he wants to include them. Councilmember Ennis, did you, your light's not on, but I thought you were getting ready to say something. Are you okay? Um, council, I'll tell you what, I'm going to admit, I didn't realize that our sign ordinance was all the way through contract area A and B. So we were already having a discussion of Highway 71 and what can you really do? But what I'm noticing is there are, if you're on the north side of 71, you may be in the ETJ. And if you're on the south side of 71 at the exact same location, you may not be in the ETJ. And then you may go through, look, and I don't really know what the scale is, you may a quarter mile or a half mile where neither side's in the ETJ. But I think expectation of signage between here and, you know, the top of the hill is within our one mile and then to be 15 miles outside of town, that, I, I think the signage for sure, we need to have a conversation about applicability and, you know, and I'm not saying just do bandit signs and have none, but I think the expectations may need to be more representative of the area. So it seems to me like the signage conversation is going to be interesting. So Ms. Bills or Mr. City Manager, the idea tonight was to just kind of have this conversation? Or what, what are, what was the goals? What were we trying to walk away with this evening?
Any, any additional feedback you guys have? I mean, about the ETJ, especially with subdivision regulations, that y'all feel that it is an important thing that we continue to pursue additional standards?
Well, I'll tell you, on your flow chart, which if you're looking at home, it's on page 28 of the packet. When it starts, the very first thing it says is place type and zoning and you're in the ETJ and you say, but you have no zoning control over me? I would think that starts an interesting conversation with the developer from, from the onset.
Yeah.
So it seems to me that might be something that, you know, maybe we have a different process flow chart if you are outside of the city limits. I appreciate your thought process that we never know exactly what they're going to do under the big dome in Austin, but I don't see in the foreseeable future that they are going to be reversing annexation. So I, it's my understanding right now, and Mr. Borkwess, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they, people have to voluntarily annex in. We have, based on the last legislation, we have no annexing powers. Is that correct?
Sorry, Mayor and Council. You're, you're correct in that if we were to annex, it could be subject to an election of the voters in that area, which is anticipated to result in it being denied.
So if I own a piece of property and while I'm one single owner of 400 lots and I'm working through things and I have an election, might be, might be a little easier go than if I'm going out into an area where there's different property owners?
It, it would. And there, there are certain exceptions to the general rule about the, the election being required. We still have the authority we've always had to have voluntary annexation. And that does continue in some communities, particularly if you're doing it through an ETJ development agreement or sometimes it's a requirement to get utilities. And so depending on what your CCN is, there may be opportunities for that in some areas. That's not off the table.
Excellent.
And if I, I'm sorry.
Please.
To build on what the city attorney just said and going back to what Jennifer said earlier in the discussion, yeah, I, I wouldn't anticipate either in the, in the short term that the legislature changes direction on, on annexation. I, I will say though, that a big part of what you're trying to accomplish with the planning process and why I do think it makes sense to apply that to the ETJ, whether the folks who live there become residents of the city or not in, in the short term, is that you're, you're regulating, your question about what does orderly development mean? It, it certainly does also mean the provision of, of utility infrastructure. Thank you, Alan. That will last for 40 or 50 or 60 years. And it is, it's also very true that what may be happening in our ETJ over the next few years is that, yeah, those folks may not ever become Bastrop residents, but it's fairly likely that they do become residents, customers of our utility systems. In fact, I think we want them to become customers of our utility system since we're building a pretty expensive, regionally focused wastewater treatment plant. So going back to your point about orderly development, how important that is on the city's perimeter, that, that goes way beyond whether those folks ever become residents. There's lots of reasons why we're concerned about orderly development on our perimeter. Great job, Jennifer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very, any other, Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yeah, I mean, to, to Ms. Bill's earlier point about the, we got into this discussion a while back to, to mitigate drainage concerns and the orderly development, just because we're further out from the, the city limits doesn't mean that, that we're diminishing the importance of protecting our transportation infrastructure as well as our drainage and watershed areas. I, I, I think it's vitally important that, that we address these issues holistically as you suggested earlier. And I, I want to express my appreciation for the give and take discussion that you have with the planning and zoning. They ask the hard questions and you provide them answers, whether it hurts or not. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bills. I'm also extremely appreciative of the idea of having different road cross-sections because along the lines, we are likely to not take over that road maintenance and it would certainly be unfair to require them to build a street that the county has no ability or equipment to maintain. We're just, then we're kind of dealing them a bad hand.
Yeah.
So I, I think that is a great thing and, and look forward to working with our precinct commissioners that, that within, at the county level, that we make sure we have good road cross-sections for them. So a really good point. Any other comments from anyone? No further comments? Oh, Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I really thought this was a good conversation, especially all the fact that we might be able to have some joint meetings later on with planning and zoning so that we can get their input and we can work together, of course, with the county and like you said, with the commissioners and things also. So good conversation and I'm glad that we had this discussion.
Okay, thank you. Council, we will be moving on to staff and board reports. Item 6A, receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending August 31st, 2020. Ms. Waldron, thank you very much, Ms. Bills. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a presentation. Not mu, not much new to talk about, so this will be short and sweet. August doesn't look very different from April, May, June and July. Let's see. So still negative electric fund, hot funds. We've been explaining each month why those are the way they are. Revenues, you know, we've been making you aware of the electric revenues being short because of credits we've been given back, which we've passed on to our customers. So that's a good thing. Hot tax fund. Our cemetery is still behind forecast, but it actually has made some ground over the last couple of months. And expenses are all positive. General fund is net positive 12, a little over 12%. The sales tax has been hovering around 4% of forecast. We still have several months that have to come in for us to close September, so that will be interesting how that ends up. Our property tax has also made its way out of warning status and now is in positive. So we're just slightly below 1% on that. Wastewater fund is positive over two and a half percent. Their revenue is, is a little over 1% above forecast. Electric fund is running almost 4% positive with their revenue short and that is to do with LCR A applied credits. Hot tax fund overall, around 15 and a half percent negative to forecast. Their revenue is short, almost 38%. You know, year to date from last year, we're almost 975,000 behind where we were. That is all I have unless you have some questions.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. Council, any questions? All right, we're good. Thank you. We're moving on to the next item, which is citizen con, comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
We are done with citizen comments. Council, we're moving on to the consent agenda. You'll see that we have a number of items on the consent agenda. One of the reasons that there are so many items is because you see the contract amounts to our essential assets that you voted on in the budget. This is the contract. You noticed in your packet that the contracts were, have been signed by the entity. In your packet, you were missing the signature in the opera, on the Opera House, but Ms. Franklin sent an email to you earlier today to let you know that there is a signed contract in the building. So all of those contracts are signed. And there was also a quick discussion about canceling the November meeting and the reason that we're only canceling November and not December is because we already canceled December earlier. So as it states in our rules and procedures, if anyone would like a consent agenda item pulled for discussion, it will be pulled and it will be the next item that we vote on. Is there any item anyone would like pulled? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, if you would please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the September 17th, 2020 boards and commissions orientation and September 22nd, 2020 regular meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of resolution number R dash 2020 dash 93 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas approving project gummy bears in an amount exceeding $10,000 for the project and providing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve resolution number R dash 2020 dash 98 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas amending resolution number R dash 2020 dash 42, approving the Bastrop Police Department to apply for a grant for, from the Edward Bernie Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program for a major slash critical scene lighting system at a total cost of $10,948.97 with no matching funds from the city of Bastrop, authorizing the chief of police as the grantee's authorized official, providing for a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8D, consider approval of resolution number R dash 2020 dash 105 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas counseling the November 24th, 2020 council meeting, establishing a repealing clause and providing an effective date. Item 8E, consider action to approve resolution number R dash 2020 dash 100 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas awarding a community support service agreement associated with providing recreation and pool services to the YMCA of Austin slash Bastrop branch at a cost of $80,000 attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the contract, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8F, consider action to approve resolution number R dash 2020 dash 102 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas awarding a community support service agreement for services for operating, marketing and staffing, Lost Pines Art Center and providing programs to citizens and tourists at a cost of $65,000 as attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the agreement, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8G, consider action to approve resolution number R dash 2020 dash 103 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas awarding a community support service agreement for services associated with operating, marketing and providing cultural art and theater services to the Bastrop Opera House at a cost of $66,175.0 attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the agreement, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8H, consider action to approve resolution number R dash 2020 dash 101 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas awarding a community support service agreement for services associated with operating, marketing and providing museum and visitor center services to the Bastrop County Historical Society at a cost of $126,497.0 attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the contract, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously and if, while she was reading those, I'm sure that you've discovered that page 120 of your budget book showed all those contract numbers. Thank you, Ms. Waldron, for getting us our budget book. All right, Council, we're on the fourth and what I like to call last page of the agenda. We're at the top of the page on item 9A. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Congratulations on your contract. Good to see you this evening. 9A, consider and adopt on first and final reading ordinance number 2020 dash 29 as an emergency measure ratifying temporary emergency orders enacted by the mayor in her capacity as the emergency management director in regards to the current local state of disaster for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health or safety. Council, I'll tell you that there is not an ordinance tonight. At our last meeting, we, y'all voted and we agreed that we would move to phase three on October 5th. We have done that. As I mentioned earlier, it's, it's been fairly successful, but I did want to give you a quick COVID update as, has become our tradition. This is when we talk about COVID. The first thing is we're on day 213 of this emergency. I just don't even know what else to say about that. The EOC has plans to deactivate by the end of the year. The reason being is that the vaccine distribution meetings are starting on October 23rd and the providers have to apply to be a vaccine provider and that will be outside of any of our venue. And so unless there's a reason to keep it active into next year, the plans are to deactivate the EOC as an entity by the end of the year. As you know, if you've looked at the website today, the confirmed cases in Bastrop County are a total of 1,900. The recoveries are 1,754, leaving the current active cases at 100 and recoveries are 1,754, leaving the current active cases at 116. And that is across the entire county, which is pushing 84,000, 85,000 people. Unfortunately, we have had 30 deaths. When I was looking through the report today, the, I do think it's worth noting that we are the smallest percentage of about any county anywhere around us in the area, and certainly below the national and state average. It's also great to note, in the last two days, there have been zero new cases added. Our testing, last week, they did 187 tests, which brings the grand total to 5,747. It's important to note that when I tell you that number, that is the number of people who have gone through the portal or been tested at Mayfest Park where we started at first. So, that doesn't count. If you went to your private doctor or you went to an emergency clinic, you're not in that 5,747. The estimate of all of the tests that have been done in Travis County is just over 14,000. So, it's just important to note that, that small difference. The call center got 46 calls during the last week, so they have accepted and handled a total of 2,864 calls. I monitor those reports every day, and the vast majority of them are folks that think they've been exposed or need to have a test. And it's, it's so awesome that they're able to direct them to the portal. The other thing that I want to note for the Austin metropolitan statistical area, which is five counties, so that's Travis County and all the counties around, which Bastrop County is one of, in all of those five counties, there are 84 people who are currently in the hospital because of COVID. There are 28 people in ICU, and there is a total of 18 people on ventilators. That's kind of the overall average. And Councilmember Rogers, I see your light came on. Do you have a question?
Well, I just was gonna have you clarify one thing. You had talked about how the number of tests went through the portal, but if you went to your primary care, but even if we went to our primary care, if they were tested positive, it would go to that other report.
Yes.
I just wanted them to realize that if you went there and you got a reported negative positive, it would be part of your other total. Just wanted to make sure.
That is excellent. Thank you for making that point. So, we have had just over 14,000 people tested, and out of that 14,000, there are 1,900 confirmed cases. You are exactly right. To be counted in the case is if you have been tested and positive, then the department, the State Department of Health Services would be reporting you. Thank you very much. That great clarification. As I stated, we started phase three on October 5. The, we already talked about the library had 50 visitors in the first two hours. We've started getting a number of event requests coming in, and it's really great. The tracking system that the city manager mentioned to you on MyGov, if you've made a request for an event, we're tracking it in the MyGov system. And part of getting your permit means that you have submitted a safety plan, and we're providing them a template. So, that's just a really good way to keep track of being clear on our expectations as well. City Hall has been opened. We haven't had any problems with that. We've had our city council meeting, our first meeting tonight, where it's open to the public. It was nice to have some folks with us this evening. And I also wanted to clarify, you saw that the governor last week said that the county judge could decide whether or not they wanted to open bars. You could opt into that. County Judge Paul Poppy did opt into that, and I want to clarify for the City of Bastrop, that made absolutely zero difference. We had no businesses that were closed because they were a bar. So, by opening the bars, it in fact opened five businesses that had previously been closed across the entire county. So, just, just wanted to kind of clarify that. The Judge Poppy and Dr. Wox would not let me, they would be very disappointed if I had a conversation about COVID without talking about the importance of wearing your mask. Part of how we've kept the cases down and keep from spreading it is to wear the mask. The masks are working. We're, they've got folks that do observational surveys, and we continue to score in the 90% of folks that are wearing it. Keep yourself in a safe position. So, please wear your mask if you are not able to maintain social distance. So, I am not asking you to approve an ordinance, but I am interested if anyone has any feedback or questions. All right, moving on to 9B. Madam Secretary, you read such a long consent agenda, it made my throat dry. All right, moving on to 9B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2020-106 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas naming the new trail to be located in Pecan Park in memory of Mrs. Dorothy Scarnulus, per the recommendation from the Bastrop Parks and Tree Advisory Board. As attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Hancock?
It's truly an honor to come in here to ask y'all for Dorothy. Everybody knows what she meant to this community and what she believed in this community could be and how hard she worked for the community. Dorothy has been, she's done so much, from co-founding Keep Bastrop Beautiful to bringing in Bird City. She was the driving force behind it, from being on the Parks Board. She just was doing so much, and that's why the Parks Board come together and myself included, and David Unik, I'm speaking for him as well. Well, we just absolutely loved her and asking y'all to name the future park after her, which, let's see, this is a park here in Pecan Park. It's the darker green area with, and the trail is what we would like to name it after her, the yellow trail. The park is 34 acres, and the trail is 4,400 linear feet, and it's going to be a six-foot wide mulch walkway, and it's all natural, fitting for her, and it's there in Pecan Park.
So, for folks who don't know, Ed and Dorothy lived in Pecan Park, so it's really fitting that it's in their neighborhood. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Councilmember Jackson?
No, I just wanted to say, I concur with this as the liaison to the Parks and Tree Advisory Board. Dorothy was so special, not only to that board, but to the city for all the things she, he's worked with. And I think it was an extreme honor to name this trail in her honor. And I hope that when the proper time comes that I can make the motion to do that, because I think she's quite deserving of it. And I think that it would be wonderful it would be for her to be recognized for all of that.
So, is that a motion?
Yes, that is a motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council, for the unanimous vote. Thank you so much, Mr. Hancock. And thoughts and prayers remain with you, Mr. Scarnulus. We look forward to seeing you again soon, Ed. We're moving on to item 9C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2020-83 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas amending section 2.3, Article 2, and Exhibits B and C of the agreement, Exhibit C of the wholesale water agreement, wow. The City of Bastrop and Aqua Water Supply Corporation is attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, mayor and council. If you recall, 2017, 2018, we worked with Aqua Water Supply Corporation, developed the wholesale agreement, knowing that one day, well, we left Exhibit C to be determined. So, we now finally have a customer. We're ready to make that move. If you'll notice, our connection point is going to be at the new tower location on Highway 20. The Aqua Board approved this jointly on October 5. So, we'll get a signed copy from them. Our city attorney has reviewed it, and we're ready to move forward. With that, I'll take any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Joe?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Council, I'll let you know that I did exchange texts with the developer, and it's been 12 years in the making.
It's been a long time, yes.
So, they were thrilled that we're taking steps forward, and given everything that's going on from Tesla to just the general, folks are wanting to live in a small town, they are really excited to get started, so.
I suspect you'll see quite a few more of these coming back here in the future, because we'll update Exhibit C every time we add new customers.
Can you make it a little more confusing for me to read?
I will work on that.
Okay, that would, that would be great. All right, we have a motion and a second. And Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. I mean, I almost feel like a round of applause. That is just 12 years in the making. And to the city manager's point earlier, we're interested in selling wholesale wet water and wastewater to as many people as we can. We're wanting, wanting to do the right thing. All right, council, we're moving on to item 9D, consider action to approve resolution number R-2020-104 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving resolution number 2020-42, amending the City of Bastrop recommendation mitigation actions in the Bastrop County hazardous mitigation plan to apply for hazard mitigation grant funding, authorizing the city manager as the authorized official, providing for a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, mayor and council. In October of 2016, we worked with Bastrop County, and we added a list of action items to the overall hazardous mitigation plan. One of those you're familiar with, it's the Gilz Branch Project. So, by having those added into this plan, you get an additional five points of scoring. So, Ms. Langford asked that we bring this back and add the projects that we're going to, we are going to apply for at the end of this month. That includes some road improvements at Agnes and Blakie, which we've talked about in the past. It includes some riverbank protection near Fisherman's and near Bob Bright. We've lost quite a bit of riverbank. It's a bank stabilization project. These are the ones that have scored the highest so far. And then a fire station on the west side of the river. So, that's what we'll be submitting. We're going to add these to the plan. And with your vote, I'll send this over to the county, and we'll get it added to the, to the book.
Council, you'll recall that there is a tranche of money that has a whole lot of zeros after it, and we are trying to get, I'm going to be blatant, our unfair share of, as much of that money as we possibly can, specifically for hazard mitigation. It's just a win for each and every one of our citizens. Any questions for Mr. Joe?
Move to, second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, and we have completed the items for individual consideration. We will be going into executive session. We have one item to discuss in executive session, item 10A, city council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes, section 5.071 and 5.1.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the acquisition of real property interests associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plant number three at 385 South Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas 78602, and its collection systems, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. It is 8:14, and we are in executive In regular session, and we are on item number 11, take any necessary or appropriate actions on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session. Councilmember Peterson, I believe you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I move to approve resolution number R-2020-107, authorizing the city manager to sign agreements for possession and use of interest in real property and right of entry with John A. and Tina T. Nixon for the West Side Collection System. Second.
I have a motion, I have a motion from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Mayor Protim Nelson, I believe you have a motion.
Mayor and council, I move to approve resolutions number R-2020-108 and number R-2020-109, authorizing the city attorney to file proceedings in eminent domain to acquire interest in real property for the West Side Collection System from Baham Interest Limited Partnership and Palm Properties LLC.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. It is 8:29. And Councilmember Peterson, we're on item number 12.
Yes, thanks, mayor. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Councilmember Rogers. It is 8:29, and we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening and be safe.